I call the emergency city council work session to order for March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And this evening on our agenda, we're going to talk about animal control and goal prioritization. It looks like you have some of those.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, municipal council. A few weeks ago, we had some residents come talking about animal control and after the meeting, the mayor and I were talking and, and we're looking, kind of thinking about the council, and this is an issue that kind of comes up every few years. And so we realized that maybe we have a lot of counselors who might not be aware of exactly what we do. You know, what is the city doing for animal control? And so we thought we'd spend a few minutes tonight just talking a little bit about our current process, what we do. You know, we feel like it works pretty well. Are there things that slipped through the cracks? Yes, um, and always, you know, looking for ways that we can kind of do it better, but just wanted to make you aware before we had any more in-depth discussion about kind of other options. So you have in front of you a document put together by the PD that just shows in two thousand twenty-two, we had almost six hundred animal calls. Five hundred and nineteen of them were dog-specific. And then a hundred of them, a little over a hundred, had an actual report written on those. So the rest of them are tracked within our system, but there wouldn't necessarily have ever been a report written by the officer that responded. And then of those, nineteen of them had charges filed. So about twenty percent of that activity makes it to the, to the level of having a citation or a charge that goes to the court. And so then, taking a look at the court, um, I had, um, the court pull just what we've done since, to date, since January first of two thousand twenty-two. And so there's a little bit of overlap and some of what they do, there might be multiple charges on one case. And so the numbers aren't going to match up exactly, but, but I think it gives a picture. So thirty-eight total violations came through to the court in that fourteen month, fourteen and a half month time period. Um, and then, but one of the interesting things that I noticed in those numbers is there's nineteen in two thousand twenty-two, but there's already been nineteen in two thousand twenty-three. So there's been some, seems like some uptick maybe. I don't know, um, what that, what that's done. But as far as, you know, they, the, the residents that spoke asked, you know, wanting to have an animal control officer. Well, we have a bunch of animal control officers. So our, our PD responds to those and, and, you know, Jason can talk from the, from his standpoint as to why he would continue to advocate that a police officer with that level of training responds to those kind of calls because of the level of emotion that comes with animal calls. There's people who care a lot about their animals. And so having someone with that higher level of training would, is, is something that he feels is important. But we contract with Pet Rescue, which is the Humane Society of Eastern Oregon, for pound services. So if, uh, if animals need to be housed for a while, those types of things. And in two thousand twenty-two, there were eighty-two dogs redeemed. So that means the owners came back and took, did what they needed to do to get them out of the doggy jail. Um, there, during that time period, we had fifty-two dogs licensed and then thirty-nine dogs were adopted. Now, all of those numbers aren't going to match up because Pet Rescue also does some work with other regional agencies. They have a contract with the city of Umatilla. They often get animals brought to them from out in the county. And so the numbers aren't going to match up a hundred percent, but it gives you an idea of the, kind of the scale. Because they do try to separate that out so that we can see what we're paying for. But, um, at the same time, it's not, they're not always able to. Because if somebody says it came from the city, they just, and they bring it and a, just a resident brings it in, they don't, they're not going to go out and try to verify it. So they can't say for sure whether that animal came from the city or if it was brought in from the county, those types of things. Um, our, I don't know, it was probably five to seven years ago, we changed the registration. We went from an annual registration to a lifetime registration. And, um, we continue to see people register their dogs, but it's mostly to get them out of, out of the pound. Um, they're required to have a license for them to come out. They're also required to have rabies shots and, and so forth. So that's kind of a picture of the scale of what, what we're doing right now with, with animal control. Any questions or anything kind of up to this point?
So, Mayor, do you have a budget of what we're spending on a budget for? I don't know what this is even called. Is it called pest control or is it called animal control? What do we budget this as?
Um, really, the only money that we're spending that we can tie directly to that is the contract with Pet Rescue. Mark, do you remember that number?
Yeah, really, the, the funding for it is not so much out of the general fund. It really allows them to keep the licensing fees as well as the other fees that they collect when a dog comes out of the pound. So I don't have those numbers offhand right now because we don't have to actually budget an expense out of the general fund typically. Unless it's thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
So I guess I'm a little confused. So when you say they get to keep the fees, they're a private entity, right? I'm not sure. What control do we have over the fees that they're charging?
Well, we set the fees. They're our agent to collect them.
Okay, so if a, an animal gets taken to the pound because it's violated one of our ordinances or something.
Right.
Then they can charge that owner a fee, and that's a fee that we've established.
Right.
Gotcha. And they get to collect that fee and keep that fee.
Correct.
Okay. So if we didn't have this service, like we didn't contract with them, I mean, could they do this legally without us?
Well, I don't think they could, they can't, they wouldn't be able to impound the, the animals without the authority of the city.
Gotcha.
Because they, they don't go out like, he did, Bo Putnam, he's the director there and does most of the work with our officers. So if there's a difficult animal, he'll, they'll call him and he'll go help them. But, um, without the PD giving him the authority, he, he can't issue a citation. He can't do any of those things.
So he doesn't do any of his own impounding himself, but people could bring animals there.
Right.
And drop them off.
Yeah. And that is what happens from other, you know, I know he has sometimes even from as far away as Memorial County or other places that will drop off animals.
And this has to be their dog. They can't bring in a random dog that somebody found on the street and drop off there?
Well, they do, they do bring random dogs.
And he can impound them?
He can take them and then he usually, he'll, he'll put information out, hey, we have this animal.
Lost.
Yeah, lost. If somebody, they have so much time to claim them and then he can adopt them out. And he also then collects an adoption fee if he, if he does do that.
I saw David's name, but.
I'm just curious what the fees are for rescuing a dog and like if it's mine or something.
Right, so the, the license fees, um, if the dog is spayed or neutered, it's five dollars. If it's not spayed or neutered, it's twenty-five dollars. And then if they're impounded and they are not spayed or neutered, it's seventy-five dollars to get them out. If they are spayed or neutered, it's twenty-five. And that's the difference of basically before they can come out, they are spayed or neutered before they come out of, of impounded. And then, you know, let's say he, he's required to keep them a certain number of days. And so for each day, there's also a ten-dollar fee. So if somebody gets there early, then their, the, the fee is less to get them out. But if they stay the full five days, I think it's ten dollars a day, so.
Yes, Councilman.
Okay, so the fees that they collect, they get to keep those and we still pay them thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars, is that what?
Yes.
Okay, and we don't get the, the fees?
We don't, we don't, that was part of our agreement, looking at the amount of work they do and, and the level of fees, that they keep the fees and we pay them a little bit more on top of it.
Counselor, please.
I would like to know if a, a dog actually attacks a person or chases them or, or is vicious and barking at individuals as time, trying to walk. Um, is the person, the owner fined or, or anything of that, of that nature? And if the dog actually attacks individuals, are criminal charges being brought against the owner?
Okay, I'm gonna ask the chief to help me out a little bit with this, but first, it's not a criminal initially, it would just be a violation for some of those things, but it could escalate. So if you can help me out, just.
Yes, um, it depends on the circumstances of, it would need to be fairly egregious to be a criminal act. But the owner would definitely, could definitely be issued a citation. Now, on the document you have, the, the, part of the problem is the officers have to witness the act or the victim has to be willing to sign a citation on behalf of the, the officer, in essence. And so barking dogs, for example, if the officers don't hear the dog barking, then it's gonna, you know, we can make contact and try to get them to control the, the animal when it is barking. But if a person wants a citation, they have to be willing to go to court. So it's, it's, it can be a bit of a problem, but, um, you know, that's, that would be the reason why the number of charges is, is so low. The, um, actually, she didn't show up, but I, I think you all received an email. That lady chose not to issue a citation or sign a citation, so we were only able to make contact.
And so sometimes you'll see, like, if, if we were reviewing a lot of these, you'd see documentation on there unable to locate. So the dog's running in my yard, but when the police show up, the dog's not there. And so they can't issue a citation because they don't, they're not witnesses of it.
So please take a report on some of these cases. So I complain about a barking dog, you cannot take a report. So five hundred and ninety-nine calls, you wrote a hundred and forty, or a hundred and four reports, right? And then of that hundred and four, there was nineteen charges that were filed?
Correct.
Is that what I'm understanding? Okay, so about twenty percent of the reports that were written actually end up in a, a charge against the owner, yes, okay. Counselor, if you have another question?
I wanted to know what was the penalty, the actual penalty that happens when, in these cases, as, when they are filed? What type of penalty? Is there jail time or is there just, uh, money that's, uh, charged against the owners?
Yeah, monetary, that would be, that would come from the court, not, not from the police department. There's an initial, uh, struggling forward to fine. I can't remember if it's seven fifty, it's been so long since I gave my citation. But there's initial, there's an initial fine, but then once it goes through the court process, then that would be determined at that time.
Other questions? Welcome.
No, having, having answered a, a large number of dog calls myself, I, I get the, the part, this part of it, you know, there's, there are only so much that the, the police departments can do due to the nature of the calls and the limitations of the law. Whereas, you know, where, you know, an infraction is only, you know, is very low on the amount of leeway that an officer has. So, you know, the, the fact that there's nineteen charges filed in twenty-two is, is actually a surprise that there's that many because, you know, it's, it's really difficult to get a complaintant to sign a citation because, you know, a lot of people, they just want to hand it off to, to, to the cops and say, you, you handle it. They don't want to take, you know, they don't want to be the one to go knock on the neighbor's door and ask them to, to take care of the problem. They want somebody else to take care of the problem.
So, um, chief, when, when a patient, or one patient, when a person files a report and they make complaints, um, of those hundred and four police reports that were written, I'm guessing that some of those were officers went and spoke to a neighbor, but maybe there wasn't a, a citation written, they just had a conversation with the individual or, or the neighbor and said, hey, getting these complaints, can you work on keeping your dog in the yard? Can you work on your dog being quiet? Those sort of things?
Yes, especially if it's like a rental property. There's just a lot of things, you know, we want to track, report to the landlord if it's a continual problem.
Other questions, counselors? God, making a loud noise down there with the chip bag?
So, um, I think the problem in our neighborhood is cats, but, you know, you can't leash a cat, basically.
You can't what?
Leash a cat, okay? And I'm more afraid of running over them because there's so many of them, basically, that's running loose and, uh, some, somebody's gonna get upset because I damaged their animal.
Yeah, and that was part of our discussion, you know? We had police department and Bo from Pet Rescue talk about it, you know? With cats, I mean, we just have so much less we can do. And that's often a complaint that there, you know, a lot of feral cats out there. And, you know, we just, that we have very little control on that.
Does Bo actually trap, or put out a live trap?
Not, not for cats, but he, I mean, he has some equipment to help catch the dogs, but that's, that's all. And I think people bring in cats quite often to, because you can go there and adopt a cat, I know that, but I don't know how he gets them.
And so he, you had mentioned something earlier, he has the authority to, um, spay or neuter an animal?
Yeah, once it's been in, once it's been not claimed for a certain amount of time, then, then he can do that. And he can require, if you want it back, it has to be, and that's again, something that comes from our authority as a city, that we can require that.
So if my dog were out running in large and you guys picked it up and you took it to Pet Rescue, you could require me to have that dog spayed or neutered?
Yes.
And we believe you can do that?
Yes.
What's that? Yes, Mr. McCarthy?
Just as a matter of process, when an animal is brought to Pet Rescue, is generally the process that a police officer witnesses a, a violation? And then Bo is called out to the scene or do, um, police officers, and then he does the capture essentially? Or do officers ever bring their house?
Yeah, often the officers will take an animal there. I mean, there, he has this kind of a process set up where they can drop it off in a certain place and just let him know. Um, but he does more on the difficult ones and, you know, dogs are a little more vicious. Um, he might come and help them get the animal under control.
Otherwise, we just stick in the backseat of the squad car?
I mean, that's why we do have a pickup truck that, that often the sergeants drive or, you know, other vehicles that we can try to utilize.
Having, having been through the process of, you know, having a, a vicious, very vicious dog in our neighborhood years and years and years ago. I mean, the thing that you can remember is, is there, you know, there, the processes exist that they can, you know, they can go all the way from, you know, just a, a simple conversation and go through the whole court system to where the animal may end up having to be destroyed because of its, its very nature. And, you know, and in the case that was in, you know, that I was involved with because of what a neighbor's dog had done to some of our pets. Um, and the, the owner failed on several occasions to do what was prescribed by the courts. The, the vet was actually called out and they actually had to put the dog down, or two dogs down right there in their yard. It was necessary. It was the only way, it was the only way of dealing with the problem.
So in your review of going through this process, are there things that we could do better? That could be improved on, policy changes that could be implemented? Are there things the council could be, do differently? What, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, so a couple of things. One, we're in the process, we have a, one of our short surveys that we're able to do is out there on this topic. And so we've already had over almost a hundred and ninety responses to that. And so we'll, we'll keep that open for another little while, just to get feedback on some basic questions. You know, and, and some of the early results are saying, you know, they'd like to have the owner held accountable and, and some things like that, which, you know, I, I think is, is, it makes sense. You know, one of the, the ideas that Bo brought to us that he's aware from other communities is right now, it probably costs someone more the first time their dog is impounded than it does the second or third or fourth. And so other communities will put up a graduated fee schedule. So if it's the second time that same dog has come in, it costs more. And the reason it costs more the first time is because maybe they're getting, first they're getting registered and then they're having to pay for the, for the spay or neutering and all of that. But then it goes down because they're only paying for the, you know, to get them out of jail, basically. And so he suggested that we can do that and that might, you know, be a somewhat more of a deterrent to people from, you know, multiple infractions. Um, and then, you know, we talked briefly about the possibility of, you know, maybe, I don't know, on, on some kind of a regular basis, having Bo go out and just proactively with an officer, go looking and see if they could, you know, do a little proactive enforcement. But that, again, right now, I, I would not going to recommend we do that when we're kind of struggling right now as far as officers and, and keeping them on the street. So, but that could be a future thing that we do from a, just from a policy standpoint.
You know, one thing that I would like, maybe a review of too, within the council, so chooses, you know, the penalties for these are pretty stiff. And so like a dog at large charges like seven hundred and fifty dollars. I mean, that's pretty substantial for a lot of folks. So looking into the code.
Yeah.
Not even murky, I think it did. Uh, just looking into the code real quick, most of the violations, uh, will fit under a B violation, which I believe are sitting about two sixty.
Two sixty.
Two sixty-five.
Okay.
It is for most of those and some violations are D violations, so.
Is that hundred and ten?
Hundred and ten, yeah, which would be less.
Okay. Well, maybe the officer gave me the, the citation was a little more egregious, which is fine, but mine was seven or eight. And so, um, I know that some of these can be pretty significant for folks. And I'm sure once they get to the court system, they probably complete certain issues and maybe it goes lower. But, um, if I was a person of less means, that would be pretty significant for me, ability to pay that fine and try and get my animal back. Um, and so obviously you want them to be punitive so that it's not something that recurs, but not so punitive that it decreases, um, the motivation to want to get your pet back or affordability to want to get your pet back, so.
Yeah, and it gets a balance because I know, um, sometimes you'll see pet owners who just, if it gets picked up, they won't go back, right? They're just gonna leave it and that's the, the animals that then Pet Rescue adopts out again. Who knows if it goes to the same person, but they're paying fees to do that too, so, you know, I don't know.
I kind of like the graduated scale idea. I think that makes a lot of sense too.
Police officers would love nothing more than to not have to put that high amount, but it's by direction. It's up to the fine.
Yes, Counselor.
I'm trying to remember what the fees are to adopt a dog, but it sounds like if the dog was able to be adopted out, could, is there anything preventing the same owner from going back and adopting the, the dog after five days or whatever has passed? And then is it cost more just to straight up adopt a dog? Like, could I say, well, we'll just wait a few days and then let's go adopt it as if it was a new dog?
Yeah, I don't have a, I was just trying to pull up their website. I don't have.
I feel like it's two twenty-five or something, but.
Yeah, I think, I think it's gonna be pretty comparable. It's not gonna be a, a cost savings to try to adopt the dog.
Just like sleep it off over the weekend, pick it up Monday. We do have another conversation for this evening. Are there any other questions or thoughts about, um, animal control and city's role in it?
Uh, just based on some conversations, it seems that a potential solution, I don't, it's one that we'd like to fill is if we potentially have more officers in place, they'd be able to be on call or potentially witness some of these violations. So just having more officers in general would, I don't want to say negate, but it would, um, help relieve the stress on not necessarily having a dedicated animal control officer, so.
We'll be having further conversations about that during the budgeting process.
Right.
Yes, Counselor Pearson.
So in terms of, because we talked about like how much this is costing and everything, and in terms of, um, you know, human hours spent with the PD, I mean, that's an additional cost with on top of contracting and everything else. I mean, so, I mean, we know that that's being part of their duties, you know? But at the same time, I mean, that seems like something we should be kind of considering as far as like making sure that the public is aware and also I'm wondering if the reason why we have so many, like nineteen are going to court now, we said, compared to all of that last year? If it's, the, the public is becoming more aware and less inclined to let things slide? And maybe it's, that's what's increasing people's willingness to step forward and say, yeah, I'm going to sign off on this because, you know, this is a, a problem worth actually stepping forward about. And is that wondering, is the problem getting bigger or is the tolerance getting lower?
And maybe we can have a more efficient court system this year than we did last year.
I, I, I think we could argue that.
Yeah. So we'll have to keep an eye on it. So can we get an update, you know, again in the future, maybe annually or something?
Yeah, I think what we could do, I mean, we could do something more regular like that. I'd, I'd also come back after we close this survey, kind of give you the final results. And then, you know, if, if you, if you want to give us direction tonight or wait until that time to, to look at the graduated, what that would look like and change in our ordinance, you know, we can go either way on that.
What do you guys feel? I'd like to wait, wait for the survey, see how much the problem is.
I think having more information is better than, and making a decision based on.
Okay.
I don't know what the word I'm going to use here is, but, uh, yeah, get some more info.
I, I agree with waiting. I think as a dog owner myself now, uh, I, I think it is really incumbent upon like the owner to make sure that the dog is trained, say, maybe one of the things that we can consider is if we're gonna release the dog back to the owner to mandate them to have some dog training classes or something, at least something.
Program through the park somewhere.
Yeah.
Yep.
Honestly, it'd be, it'd be good for both the dog and the owner.
If you get their fine reduced, they go to park somewhere and have doggy training. I like it.
Defensive dog, of course.
Good idea. Okay, so we also on our agenda this evening have our annual goal prioritization discussion. And I know Sarah was gonna log in and join us live. Are you here, Sarah?
Yes, I am here.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
How are you feeling?
Um, good, good. I'm right along. Glad to, and I finished my last council retreat this past weekend, so now we're just making sure we're getting everybody's stuff, goals wrapped up. And that's what we wanted to talk with the council about tonight. So there were a couple of items that we needed some additional direction on. Um, in addition to seeing if you have any questions or revisions? to seeing if you have any questions or revisions to the goals that were, like the draft goals that were listed in your packet. And then hopefully, we can get that clarification and take you guys through a polling exercise where you can do some prioritization to help give staff some direction as they assemble their work plans and put forth things in the budget for council consideration. So, if, if you guys are ready, we can, we can start our review of the goals and, and gain some clarity before we do that formal work.
Let's do it.
It's nice to be here.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay, well, let's, so, in your packet, you had a list, and I'm going to share my screen, if I'm allowed. And still, it's not telling me I'm allowed to, to share.
Beau's working on it.
Okay, give it a shot here. There we go, okay. All right, so, you guys should have this in your packet. These are the draft goals. So, again, we aligned them with provisioned goal areas, the four areas of growing prosperous, healthy, sustainable, connected, and engaged. And within each of those, we have some focus areas. So, in growing prosperous, workforce development, transportation, housing, and some actions aligned with those. And safe and healthy wellness, community safety and public safety, as well as some actions there. And then, in sustainable city facilities and physical sustainability and actions associated there. And then last, connected and engaged, there's the focus area of community engagement and a couple of actions there. I will just note on this, you have action number 15 and action number 11. Those are both related. So, it's about exploring sustainable funding sources and this one is directly related to public safety, but it would likely happen in looking at just overall sustainability of funding and to evaluate other fees and revenue options. So, to support public safety as well as just overall services to a greater current levels. Just, just wanted to point that out. And then, there were two items that we had, we put them in the parking lot for the time being because they needed, in order to be able to craft them, that's some specific language, we just needed a little bit of direction from the council. So, there was one that came up during the workforce development discussion around looking into immigration city status. And there was a little bit of discussion about it, but there wasn't, we didn't do our polling on it to make sure that there was a majority of the council that wanted to, to include this in the goals and pursue it. And then, the other one was in community engagement. There was some discussion around a community and employee recognition program. To some extent, this happens now. And so, I think, we just wanted to make sure that if this is one the council wants to move forward, understanding the direction of the staff above and beyond what it, what currently happens, so that we know how to craft some language for your goals. So, those are, if we could, start with this one around immigration city status and just let it, let me know if there's, if this is something that you guys want to move forward on, on your list of goals and your workforce development.
And Mr. Man, those, and council, those are page 59 in your packet, if you want.
So, I think this needs to be better defined. So, when we talk about immigration city status, what does that mean? And so, I think that what I felt during the conversation was, the city was open to allowing immigrants the opportunity to move here and being recognized as a city that immigrants could move to, and how we would, from a legal standpoint, position the community to do that. I think that's kind of the census that I thought I heard during that conversation. Others?
From what I recall, one of the contributors saying, it was in regards to, there are, I believe he said there are different tiers in regards to when immigrants first come into the country and they go through the process of coming in and getting us on one of those particular tiers, legally speaking, so that when they come in and they go through the process of getting that legal immigrant status and then us being one of those cities that would then be able to be one of the areas that could be one of the welcoming ones, where they could then settle and become part of the community, because there are different spots along the, the journey.
Right.
So, I think, you know, I don't know that we can maybe put this down as a goal, it probably, it sounds a lot more like we need a lot more information. And so, maybe the goal would be look into the process.
Maybe, how about research and report on immigration city status process?
Yeah, some sort of that effect. I mean, we may not qualify, we may not have the resources, we may not be big enough, we may not be whatever enough. And so, it just came up during, during our goal setting session as an opportunity to help grow our population, help with our workforce challenges that we're facing right now, as well as creating opportunities for people coming to this country.
Others have a comment on that? Does that feel like a reasonable request?
That, that's a lot more clear from our standpoint, that we can, you know, do something along those lines within a reasonable time period. Otherwise, it felt a little bit big and not sure where we go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sarah, will you give it up?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, we crafted it so it'll say research and report on requirements for immigration city status. And there's a majority of the group, I can't see you guys, but as long as there's a majority that wants to add it to the list, we will, we'll add it in there as part of the prioritization process.
Yeah, everybody, how many, how do you feel?
A little bit.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we want more information, so.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Then this next one is around, just giving clarity on develop a community and employee recognition program. So, you guys had some discussion around just recognizing, there's lots of volunteers in the community, there's staff that does great work, and you guys have some, some ways to recognize folks now. And, and so, I think staff, just when they were developing the, the draft goals and actions, just wanting to make sure that there is clarification on, above what's currently happening, what else would the council like to see?
So, Byron, we don't currently have any sort of formalized recognition program in the city, do we?
No, not from the city. As I, when I read this, I was thinking, we, you know, we just experienced the distinguished citizens awards and those types of things that the chamber does. And so, I'm just trying to clarify from a community standpoint, what, what is it we're looking at? And then, as far as an employee recognition, we, we do, we recognize anniversaries and, and things like that. And different departments have individual recognition programs where, you know, if something good happens, they'll, you know, the, the employee gets recognized within their department and so forth. But, we don't have a, you know, employee of the month kind of a thing. And we've kind of stayed away from that, just we're a little bit small for things like that, I think, right now, just employee wise.
It seems like there are a lot of good things, though, that happen throughout the year that the council could recognize. And not necessarily just with our staff, but including our staff. You know, we have several recent situations with the police department where officers went above and beyond in service that could be recognized publicly at a meeting like this. I think when you recognize somebody in front of the city council, it creates some significance. And there are some opportunities, I think, for us as an organization to recognize those good, those good incidences. Maybe we label it Community Service Award, or Hermitson Community Service Award, or, what, we'll come up with a title or something like that. So that we can, on a as-needed basis, not a scheduled basis, but an as-needed or as-recognized basis, we could recognize these individuals. Councilman Peterson, anxious. Got something to say?
I do.
Yes.
And, and when is that rarely not the case? But, I will say that my, my employer at CVC, they have a thing every year called the SOR Award. And they, what they do is they say, "Okay, so, we have, are going to, we take nominations for the classified employee," or, and they, they have the different groups. So, it might be like, you know, the student volunteer, you know, award, and basically, and they have people put in nominations and they have to like say, "Here's what makes this person amazing in this particular regard." And then, they just have a group of people that go through the nominations and then this person gets what is called the SOR Award. And it's a nice little ceremony during just, you know, the first open house, sort of, I guess they'd call it in-service at a regular school. And so, it'd be in a city council where those people are like, "Hey, somebody in the community nominated to as the, you know, the hero for your department." And it's, it is an annual thing and for a city, maybe it would be like a biannual thing and people come and go. But, it's just kind of a nominated by, doesn't even have to be within the department, it could be just somebody who interacted with the department, "I had really great service from this person who worked in the, in the electric company and they did a great job, they really helped me out, that was amazing." And so, and you don't even know who you're nominated by. So, that's pretty cool. And they get a little plaque and stuff like that.
Others have thoughts on this?
So, my, my only concern on something like this is, you know, where are you, where do you get your, you know, where do you, where, where's the line for significance, yeah, of this? You know, what, you know, what is significant enough or, because I don't, you know, for me personally, I don't want this to be like a popularity contest. That's not, that's not something that should be, it should be more of a, you know, you see, it's, you see, I mean, I guess there are certain things that, you know, you see, you know it, you know, as if, you know, the, the deal that occurred this, this weekend or, you know, here in the last week or so that with the police department, you know, it's a, that's an obvious, that's an obvious attaboy type thing. But, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't want to allocate a bunch of time to something that, you know, is, is like sort of popularity contest. That's, that's not what this should be about.
Yeah, I kind of view it as significant, you know, not something you're forcing.
Every day.
You know, it's something that raises to the attention of multiple community members or to our attention at the council level, like, "Wow, that's making a difference in the community." That was going above and beyond, you know, volunteerism or your employment or your job. I mean, this is like, you are special. And so, we want it to be significant, I think, in order to raise that attention and not make it just a process that you feel like you're going through a routine chipmunks.
Yes, like, I, I don't think that it should end up feeling forced or scheduled in any way, because then that takes away from, you know, what it really is and should be.
Others' thoughts? Yeah, Councilman McCarthy?
I just have, I'm not sure what the direction would be for this, but I'm, I'm seeing a potential problem happening where, and perhaps the solution to this is developing parameters for submission of recognition. But with one person who feels that their thing was not recognized, but they feel that it's more significant than the thing what that was being recognized. I've sat on a few committees like that where we've specifically not done some community spotlight type of deal just to avoid that. So, I would just want to put some direction in there that says we need to have some very specific submission guidelines and maybe that means only within a certain parameter or a certain field, just so that we don't hurt anybody's feelings.
Well, and, I don't know, I'd rather give out too many than not enough. I mean, there's probably, you know, multiple opportunities to thank people and, you know, even though it wasn't significant enough, if it was significant, if it was submitted as significant, you know, let's take the time to recognize it, if it was significant to somebody. So, I don't know, maybe we come up with some sort of.
Well, I, I think this discussion really helps give me a little more clarity what, you know, kind of what the goal was. And maybe again, we can come back with some ideas and give the council's comments on something and, and, and work on that. With maybe some of the parameters that Council McCarthy's talking about and things like that.
Sarah, how do you want?
Okay, so, yeah, so if there's a majority of the group that wants to move it forward, I revised it to just say, to just add that it'll be a community and employee recognition program, some sort of formalized community service award, and you guys will staff additional direction as it comes forward. Is that, does that meet the needs of the group? Is there a majority that supports that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. So, for this next piece, I'm just going to update your polling here quickly.
Sarah, I think this might be, Sarah, I think this might be a good kind of breakpoint potentially.
Okay.
We just have a few minutes left of our work session. We're going to take care of the early parts of the business and then we come back to do this part while you kind of work on, on the polling. Is that good?
Yeah, that sounds great. I will, the link will be the same for the council meeting, correct?
Yes, you can, I mean, you can just stay on and go, go dark.
Okay, I'll stay on.
Yeah, we're gonna.
I'll see you guys again, Sarah.
Sarah, are you still there?
Yes.
We're going to revise our agenda if the council so chooses to move you up. So, we're not going to make you stick around for the whole entire council meeting. And then, just for clarification, what does this polling process look like so we can kind of be prepared when we get to that conversation?
It's, it's a electronic polling process that you'll get a message and a link and be able to do voting through your devices.
And then, we're going to prioritize based on how we feel you guys should attack first.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and just, we can introduce it during the meeting as well, for any of you who's listening online, but the, it's to give staff a viewpoint. So, this isn't a, you know, super scientific process. You guys will be able to see the results live, not provide you a summary of them actually fact. But it is to give staff some additional direction as they develop the timeline and their organizational work plan and put the proposed budget together for you. So, that's the purpose of the prioritization.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, see you all soon.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Anything else, Byron?
No, that's, that's it.
Okay, so, let's take a quick recess. We will recess till seven o'clock, when then we'll start the regular city council meeting. We will recess till seven o'clock, when then we'll start the regular city council meeting.